I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no deference to none.
All right, all of them, Vincent, Alrick.
Yes.
You're Sauer.
Yes.
Stansted.
Yes.
Porter.
Yes.
And girls. We have no visitors currently, um, so we'll move into, um, adopting the agenda. Uh, there are a couple of changes, um, note, under the improvement, uh, payment of claims, the total number, seven four nine four three eight point eight one, uh, the wire payments is four eight seven eight two six point one three, and we will also add five point two point three under the, um, personnel items, and it would be a resignation for Morgan McGaffey. Are there any other additions or corrections to the, uh, to the agenda? I'll look for a motion to approve. So, second is the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Bring this to the superintendent.
Okay. Well, I'm sure you're, I've probably already heard on the news that the legislature did not complete their work by the deadline of May nineteenth, and so they're going back to a special session, I know, maybe their meeting and committee meetings, hopefully get all that work done, sounds like they're still concerned, I know that's a little obvious that, uh, who give us information have said that really the hope is to be done, I think, before Memorial Day, otherwise then the next deadline would be June thirtieth, before a government shutdown happens, however, um, on June first, they'll start putting information out to folks, let them know if there's going to be layoffs and things like that, so hopefully they can get it done, um, my understanding is it should be able to be done, but should have been able to done by May nineteenth as well, so we do have a couple items that are, uh, bills that have passed, one is pension reform, remember Mr. Krach talked about that at a prior meeting, so they did get some pension reform taken care of with that, and then the unemployment insurance, they have allocated another hundred million dollars to take care of that, so that'll finish up this summer and the following summer, I think there's some discrepancy after that if it will continue, I believe that the House, uh, has some plans to sunset that, but we'll have to wait and see on that piece there. So those are the two that have, that we, uh, late to schools that are taking shape there, uh, but we'll just have to wait, so we really don't know all the, our complete financing pieces, which then of course holds up negotiations just a little bit as well. District Year End Picnic will be next Thursday, um, May twenty ninth, so if you're able to help serve, the board has done that in the past, if you can't completely understand it is during what day there, but one o'clock this one will serve food, so we need to have some folks here earlier than that, um, we can still use that grill, I suppose reach out to Mr. Krach, or he uses the lion grill, right, uh, or Terry. Terry always did it at home. Okay, so maybe I'll reach out there to see, because they've got a nice large grill, we're getting hamburger from actually our meat processing class, so we'll have hamburger and the, the brats and some sides, and we were hoping for Asbury, sure, but they don't sell that, I guess, anymore, so I went to a hortons on that, but we'll do that at one o'clock next Thursday, and then, um, the awards recognition will be at two o'clock, where we'll give you years of service pins, as well as our teacher and support staff of the year awards, and we have, of course, one retirement to recognize at that time as well. Graduation is Friday at six thirty, I know there's been notification that's run out, Mr. Wood has made sure to tell the parents, I think, and the students, and so everybody knows that it's Friday at six thirty P M., it's on the website as well. Uh, and the, the M D E visit, again, just some exciting news that, uh, we've been, uh, Mr. Swatki hosted M D E here earlier this week, and, uh, they were supposed to be here for about thirty minutes, and it ended up being about a four or five hour visit, and they'd like to have, um, his group present with them at the school board's leadership conference, so exciting pieces there for our H department, buildings and grounds, the meeting at eight thirty this morning to take care of or discuss a little bit on the HVAC, uh, repairs that may happen in the, um, auditorium, as well as scoreboards at North Elementary, and some signage potentially for the state tournament teams, some are here at the school, so those will be the three things that are on that agenda, then we've got our three quotes not for state tournaments, uh, so we get those, uh, recent, uh, get those ready to go here by August, uh, then the teachers have their last day, May thirtieth, and then our next school board meeting will be June fourth, is our committee meeting there, if you don't remember, um, if everybody's comfortable, switches all of our summer meetings go to that seven o'clock in the morning, so, so for everybody there.
Question or comment from Mr. Donald? All right, and we will move into the approval of payment of claims, Mr. Porter, you have anything for us there?
Okay, well, we had, uh, we had a few things here, the Holly, we had two thousand dollar check on Holly baseball for the dugouts, the huge dugouts, and then we did, um, call on bus service for sixty seven thousand three hundred eighty-three dollars, remember the sorely law for eleven eighty-five, um, rusted bus service for the girls' basketball, um, team was fifty-two, fifty-three, and then we had, uh, some payments to our non-credit card, uh, a lot of it was C T E reimbursed, um, some stuff for Mr. Swatki, um, for thirty five oh seven and eighteen cents, and then we also had our van payment down there, uh, for eighty-seven thousand some dollars, so, um, I would look for, um, the total checks of two hundred sixty-one thousand six hundred and twelve dollars and sixty-eight cents, uh, total wire payments of four hundred eighty-seven thousand eight hundred twenty-six dollars thirteen cents, and then, so our total payment of claims of seven hundred forty-nine thousand four hundred thirty-eight dollars and eighty-one cents.
Okay, is that a motion?
Um.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That moves us into our consent agenda, um, approve the, you get the meeting minutes from the April sixteenth and, uh, May seventh, any additions or corrections to the meeting minutes? We also find the following personnel, uh, continuing contracts for, um, Chelsea Sutherland, Nicole Walinski, and Blair Elliott. We also have the renewal probationary teachers of Iver Masterson, Taylor Lampy, Gage Wobley, Melissa Randall, Chelsea Gasser, and Eli, Elijah Wallace, and we also have that resignation from Morgan McGaffey. Are there any, um, other items to add to five point two?
The end of the policy for, for our final reading.
Oh, okay, so then we also have the final reading of, uh, policy five oh six, student discipline, uh, policy five seventeen, student recruiting, policy five eighteen, the amount of the I orders, policy five nineteen, interview of students by outside agencies, and policy five twenty, student survey, and so on. Are there any items on those anybody would like to discuss? I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Some.
And a second?
Say.
All, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I, we'll give you that second there.
All right, that brings us to new business, uh, we need to approve the resolution accepting donations, we have the following donations, uh, land township, uh, twelve hundred dollars for summer rec, Compteur Township two fifty for summer rec, Delaware Township one hundred for summer rec, Kensington Fire Relief Association two hundred for open gym donation, uh, Solomon Township four hundred for summer rec, Lawrence Township fifty for summer rec, double A clients one hundred for author visit donation, uh, Elbe Lake Fire Relief Association five hundred for changemakers, Elbe Lake Fire Relief Association one thousand for stage fine art donation, um, Elbe Lake Fire Relief Association five hundred for open gym, Elbe Lake Fire Relief Association fifteen hundred for summer rec, Bear Fire Relief Association five hundred for summer rec, uh, Box Tops fifty-six fifty for April payout, and also the city of Kensington, fifteen hundred for summer rec. I'll look for a motion for that resolution to accept those donations.
Some.
And a second?
Second.
Roll call both, um, girls.
Yes.
Porter?
Yes.
Stansted?
Yes.
Sauer?
Yes.
I'll be a yes. Alrick?
Yes.
And Vincent?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. That brings us to, uh, the resolution related to termination and non-renewal of teacher contract, probationary teacher, um, we have two of those correct, Mr., are there, they're separate?
They're separate, yeah, it was just the non-renewal, or, excuse me, yeah, the non-renewal, and that's because of licensing, remember, it was under a variance, or, or, commission, and Eric was able to teach in that class, and so we had to repost and just find a, a licensed candidate to fill that vacancy.
Here, okay, so, um, it resolved the school board of independent school district two three four two, the pursuant to miss those statute one twenty-two A one four zero, subsection five, and the district master agreement, the teacher contract of Erica Gordon, probationary teacher in the independent school district two three four two shall be non-renewed at the end of the twenty-four twenty-five school year, effective June thirty, twenty twenty-five. That will be the resolution number one. Is there a motion for that resolution?
Some.
And a second?
Okay.
A roll call of both, Vincent?
Yes.
Alrick?
Yes.
I'll be a Sauer? Yes. Stansted?
Yes.
Porter?
Yes.
And girls?
Yes.
The second resolution we have has to do with the reduction.
Yep, this is actually placing, so, if you can remember, it'll display the process, uh, it's asteroid process, so first one is proposing to place, there's an opportunity for a teacher to challenge that if they want, and there was no challenge there, and so this is the final piece of placing this holster on that unrequested leave of absence for the twenty-three preschool position.
All right, so, um, that one does not have. Oh, sorry, here, uh, whereas the school board of independent school district two three four two without a resolution proposing placement, the man in Boston on unrequested leave of absent four point three F T E on April sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, on the grounds of lack of people's. Any questions on that one? I'll look for a motion for that resolution.
Some.
And a second?
Second.
A roll call of girls.
Yes.
Porter? Yes. Stansted?
Yes.
Sauer? Yes. I'll be a yes. Alrick?
Yes.
And Vincent?
Yes.
All right. That brings us down to, uh, six point four, uh, approve the class of twenty twenty-five candidates for graduation pending final approval by administration. This is just a yearly.
Yep, got board approval for that, so we have fifty-six graduates, good graduates, and Mr. Wood, I talked to him yesterday, said, at this point, everybody's on track to graduate, so there won't be any, shouldn't be any changes, long as everybody finishes strong here this week.
All right, any questions on that one? Then I'll look for a motion to approve graduates.
Some.
Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign?
Let's make them Josh, and I should just mention, everybody got to mention that, my superintendent for Kateland here, I'll get the two board members that'll be on stage, that'll be awarding most of the publicity for our graduates.
You guys can shake out if you do whatever you want, or half and half, or, just be able to dance out there, so. Okay, uh, six point five, a call for field bits, that's pretty standard, if you're any sign you're doing that yet for our board. Can I get a motion for the call for field bits?
Some.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Then we are going to consider approve the job description for the Dean of Students position.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, I missed the revised calendar, sorry, approve the twenty-four twenty-five revised school calendar. And the board, just so we said, that preliminary calendar, if there's any changes throughout the year, the board does need to revise that, um, it does impact funding, we have all our minimum days, all of our minimum number of minutes, but we just have to just make those adjustments and, and have the board. So as you remember, several of those days, uh, were bad weather, uh, we did have some days as well due to having very successful, uh, tournament teams this year, and so that was exciting times there, but probably some discussions on the day after summer, see how they handle that, because we close down our normal number of, of days there, so we need to handle that in the future, um, do we keep it the same, do we look at different ways to do that, I think just some discussions that need to be held, but, uh, here is that revised calendar that sort of needs to be approved, and, 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 along with all of our board decisions.
Any questions? So, uh, is this the how?
Yeah, that was for state tournament teams and stuff, that's, that's exciting.
If there's no other questions, I'll look for a motion to adopt the revised calendar for twenty-four twenty-five.
Some.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we'll take a look at the descriptions for the Dean of Students position.
Yeah, just for some clarity there, I think I was trying to figure out what's our best mesh to put that position together, um, you know, that way as we have, have transitions, so, one of the options that was kind of, as I talked, uh, our admin team was, um, when we, you know, we have some increased student behaviors at the elementary levels, or are there some pieces there that maybe, uh, skill set that is, would be helpful, and one of those thoughts was maybe somebody that has some special education background, some training in de-escalation, uh, could help with that, I know there is a little bit of concern from our elementary special education staff, that we do have that one reduction at North Elementary, remember, we had a teacher who resigned her position, we've not filled that position, I did tell them we would continue to monitor if we see additional student numbers and things like that, that it wasn't just that we're not going to do that, but this would be the offer an opportunity for that person, if they have that special education background and licensing, to fill that role as well, which would allow the district to get some reimbursement, I could reach out to Todd Nixkey and Todd Travis, and as long as we're doing duties related to, so maybe it's going to be helping those special education teachers with some paperwork, you know, the I E Ps, evaluations and stuff like that, that would all come towards that, so, uh, possibly we could see thirty percent reimbursement on that, you know, thirty, uh, excuse me, thirty percent of that position could maybe be reimbursed, but that's what it comes to, which would help some, some of our cost savings there, still leaves the community education fees out there, so, um, I did talk to Megan a little bit about that, and just said, is there opportunity, she just said a lot of time this year was spent with student management, so oftentimes a community, you know, used to out of school hours and things like that, um, she said, really, the biggest thing is is whatever we do in the district office, she said, without having anybody there, it's quite more workload on her from start to finish, um, getting things done, so she said that would be one piece to consider, uh, however, she said, yeah, it could be maybe somebody on a, on a stipend type basis that could take care of that, and then you saw with the daycare piece, I think that's going to be a simple fix, we do have some extra time at North Elementary with a few folks, um, just because of travel, it didn't work out, if you start looking at travel, then also you don't have the extra time, this is our time, it's used up with travel, with some of our specialist teachers, and so looking to maybe have them or somebody else help cover one hour per day, so then our supervisor, daycare supervisor, um, is in their job description, but has time to do that, otherwise they've been with students the entire day, and so if we give them an hour to take care of the administrative clerical duties, uh, the billing, as well as, you know, securing people, if they need stuff and stuff like that, uh, I know that past team before that just said daycare came up each time, this position becomes overwhelming because of daycare, 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 and, and, but we need to look at that, at that piece there as well, um, is the daycare, and then the preschool, we have some, uh, less numbers, uh, in, in our preschool, and so there is some available time there as well, so having our preschool, our preschool teachers take care of the, the paperwork and things like that, maybe we really have, um, all five hours per week, and so there should be plenty of time to get that taken care of, the only thing is there may be a required summer stipend, if there's some summer reporting that needs to be, to be minimal, uh, things like that, so, maybe it stays as Dean of Students, community, and, and so I guess that's the conversation, those are just the ideas that were on course as I, as I checked with the, the group, now I know the one thing is, there's concerns about, we need to get this filled, this is a significant position that needs to get filled, and I said, yes, I understand that, I think we could potentially have some internal candidates, you know, that could maybe make some transition moves there as well, if there's some possible interest there, um, you know, that way, but, I guess at the same point too, recognizing and realizing, you know, we are declining in enrollment, so we have to be careful, as we make it, it's easier to make decisions for the transition when you have a health plan, not, you've got a catcher position, so, um, that's kind of where those conversations were at with the administrative team, and just wanted to bring those to your attention, I would say, you know, the one thought that I had out there of having a thirty to forty thousand dollar savings initially, that was off the table, we're not going to be able to accomplish that, you know, that was, unless we go for weak teachers, but that really came back pretty concerning for staff, I think you can be guys around that last time, saying, hey, we have student issues, and now that teacher gets pulled out, so what services are not being handled there, and things like that, so that was the one, one concern of looking at that lead teacher model, it's just that we seem, and now, that's, you know, students change every year too, so that could be a different change out there as well, if maybe they have other services provided elsewhere and things like that. What did we do prior to here, prior to that Dean position being created, and at the elementary, we had more students, but probably less behaviors, uh, what was the, what was, I'm not saying that we had to go back to that, um, what I'm saying was, is, what was the process of dealing with behaviors when we only had a principal? Who dealt, who dealt with the behavior? If we only had one person at one spot, not the other? I would say it was probably just the principal, that would have dealt.
Well, the principal was that more, developed the years, that's all, before we created the Dean position, or how long has it been, thirteen years?
Long, like that. Yeah, I don't know, that would have been, maybe the secretaries, maybe Louisa and Sherry, they've been in the room for a long time, I will.
I do, I do know, just when I first came, a lot of the discussions, that's when, um, Harold retired, right as I came into the district, there was a lot of conversations about that going back and forth, and the comment was the need for that second position because the administrator was constantly traveling back and forth, primarily for behavior issues.
And I think unfortunately, so, I don't, I first started off as an administrator, I was a superintendent and a principal in the district, and they said, well, we're allowed to be the elementary principal, because they, the secretary kind of takes care of the teachers, know what they need, and you don't see as many behaviors, and I would say, no, let's block for student behaviors, I would, I think Caitlin and Megan might deal with more student behaviors at their level than what we do.
I guess it's probably significantly increased.
Yeah, it's been a huge change, and I think the concern that staff has is if there's not somebody there to take care of that, not when we do, and, and I don't know if our secretaries are eager to take that on, I did kind of mention some ideas to them, and they just, well, that puts them in a spot too, that they haven't been trained for and things like that, so, so, yeah, I think that's the, the biggest thing that I heard from the admin team, and I think even some of our teachers, was the student management piece, we see it escalate, and the last thing we wanted to do was pull that back, on the student management side.
Can you have, uh, I know we have doubt, it's, it's something important to know for that, yeah, probably the next, over a month, but how many, how many hours is that, you know, so we'll look at this piece, because we consider it strengthened, how much we're talking about, or, I, I just think that's an important piece, we'll look at this.
Megan said it all depended on the months there a little bit, so she said, she thought like hour per day, if there's clerical support, topical spaces, she said, just the management, uh, hour per day.
So twenty hours a month.
Right, yep, yep, and she said that it would probably be the months of, she said it kind of starts in March, and through May, it would be some of the busier months, because it's summer rec, so you're getting the donation letters out, you're collecting the donations, and then you're also getting that program ready to go and things like that, she said, then, yep, you have to get people ready to go for adult volleyball, but she said that kind of takes care of itself, you know, after you get a framework ready to go there, um, so she felt one hour per day on average to get that done, she said some months are, on average, she said, so some months it's going to be two or three hours per day, or so there's going to be some months where it's not going to be anything, because everything's running, but, again, just that it really does matter too, she said, on, if there's clerical support there, and the daycare, if there's no billing, I did talk to Megan a little bit, and she said she could assist with the billing, that we would just get a document ready to go, so our daycare supervisor could have that ready to go, they could share a, a form, so it's all clear that way, so it doesn't require much time there, right now, all that's taken care of by, I believe, Megan, all the receipts are all done, and, uh, just comes to that receipt and ready to go. So I think that would.
Was daycare piece of the, kind of a form on this position side for everyone wanting to complain about it, every, I mean, the last two that I've talked to that went to move on to be something else, you know, when you ask them why this is, yeah, so, is your recommendation that this is, daycare piece is going to be completely removed from this position?
Yes.
So they're not going to be, they're not going to be told, somebody else is going to do it, but ultimately they're responsible, somebody else is ultimately going to be responsible for this and not the Dean's position?
Right, if our daycare supervisor, the way to give that daycare supervisor time to get that done, I think that's what's happening, is they were just in the mix all day long, they didn't have time to actually secure people that they needed ready to go, you know, somebody's saying, hey, I can't be there after school today, so it gives them that time to have that plan.
When is that time to that other, this is two separate questions.
Yep.
So, what you're telling me is the daycare por- portion of the, what used to be in the Dean's job description will no longer be there, they don't have to worry, they go home tonight, don't have to worry about daycare.
Right, yep.
And, and secondly, with whoever's going to be the daycare supervisor, when that hour that they're going to be given a day to find themselves or whatever, when is that hour, can they take that hour anytime during the day, because I can't imagine you're going to try and find a sub at two thirty?
It'll be one of our current.
Or you might do something that you have to do at noon, or?
Right.
I mean.
It'll be one of our current staff, so it'll lead us back to that role, to say, it might be.
But when, so if somebody calls in a, whatever, at lab thirteen, says, hey, I'm going to be able to make it to the daycare, is that person going to be able to, that has to find that sub, they going to be able to start working on that right then, or do they have other job duties till three o'clock, you know what I mean? Why do they not have the time to, to do that?
My, my hope would be that they would have plan A, plan B, plan C, to say, hey, I get this call, these are the first two people that I can reach out to, and maybe even if it's not, if their planning period has already ended, maybe they need to reach out to Tony or Danielle and say, hey, I don't have somebody after school, these are the three people that are on that list, could you please call them to see if they could be here, and sometimes it's one of our internal staff, just a quick email to say, hey, we don't have anybody to cover, I know that we've got a teacher that's covered several times for us, from our repair professionals, and said, you know, all states, so it could just be having that ready to go, that, I mean, it's kind of like crisis planning, right, that you have that ready to go, and maybe that is asking the secretaries then just, uh, get that email out, or make that contact and confirm that, yep, we've got this person to take care of.
I just, yeah, I mean, uh, just to be, we got to be open and honest with their selves, it's not going to be that easy, if it was that, if it was that easy, it wouldn't be a problem in the job for the last couple of years, right?
Right, yep.
So, probably going to.
It's more than we want versus the. The problem in the job is the billing, you know, like, making sure that all the billing, all that other back end, so not just necessarily calling somebody when somebody called and sick, it's, it's the, the whole piece, right?
I mean, they've all said that, that, you know, that's just staff stress of making sure there's enough staff, that we don't have to send it home, is, isn't it?
Right, yep.
And whoever's filling that role, if it ever happens, has to have the time to do that.
Right.
When they need it, not just, say, they have, you know, an hour, which might not, say, it's there on paper, but is it there for them when they need to do it?
Yeah, it'd be hard, I mean, so if their time is, so maybe that's the strategic piece of what to do, to say, hey, we will do it at one to two, so, if you need to make that change, you can do it at that point, you know, so they have time there.
He's just, yeah, I mean, if they have another, these, those issues like that are things that pop up, right, so, they've already got a plan on their day and they're working, so, for them to necessarily be able to just step away, and not be there, I'm just concerned, I'm, I'm not concerned, I just want to make sure there's a plan, because I think it's going to be a collective group that knows that they need to do this, that maybe we're.
Right, yep, yeah, and I mean, I would say, in those cases, potentially, the principal and the Dean of Students could probably also say, hey, what can I do to help here, you know, but I think an email, they have that list of three or four people, and say, these are, this is our to-go list, you know, our going-to list, and things like that, and maybe plan C, as we do, to close the daycare, because we just don't have coverage, you know, those pieces there, but, yeah, and I think it's helped too, here, that we don't have a longer license, you know, the D H S, because that was the big piece there. Yeah, and I think it's helped too dear that we don't have a longer license, you know, the D H S, cause that was the big piece there. So I know when, when we had transitioned in that daycare supervisor piece, that's one of the things we need to change for. Cause we weren't really seeing any of the benefits of that. And so I know that's been helpful, but it's still a challenge, you know, trying to secure people. Not an opportunity, I think we even pay a two dollar premium, you know, to people who stay and do the daycare. So if you're a paraprofessional making twenty dollars an hour, now you make twenty-two, when you do that, then our teachers get the same thing as well. Not two dollars, not with their, their teacher wage, but they're bringing the extra, the extra duties, the twenty-two fifty or the twenty-four maybe. So just make sure that we have people to do that.
And then is it your recommendation that's done that the community ed force has stayed with that position of being?
I am open to either, I, I, I think, yeah, I mean.
Looking somewhere else or?
Or is it just a separate stipend piece or is it an overload? I mean, I think we could look at overload, we could look at a stipend. I do like a little bit of the idea. So to me, the biggest thing that I kinda came up with was remove daycare. That was the big issue with them, I got the emails back from both, folks who have been at the role. Daycare was, I think one person each, no matter what question I asked, that's how it started on each one was daycare. Well, it's a little bit different question, but still daycare. So, um, so I think removing that piece, you know, but if we, and then that student management was the other piece. We just need some people who are skilled in that area to help. It's becoming more time consuming, even though our student numbers are going now, it's become more time consuming. It's a frustration for some of our, our folks as well. And so what can we do to make sure that that support is there if there's a student who needs additional assistance? What can plan can we have? And so I think if it's somebody with that skill set, that might be able to have some more training in deescalation, some of those areas to help. That might help eliminate that just a little bit. We can have, and again, also trying to maybe take care of that concern of the special education paperwork. That, hey, we're losing a complete person here and there's really nothing, so does that help alleviate that as well? So I don't have the perfect answer, I think either one of those works well. Um, I guess I'm a little intrigued by the idea of a special ed person being maybe in the schools. Uh, just because we could get some reimbursement and they'll have, they might maybe deescalation training and things like that to help them. Doesn't mean that somebody else wanted to get into the position, doesn't have that skill set. A lot of people are just naturally all right when I start, I was one of those people taking on training.
I know in the past, we had a conversation about, you know, the community ed, does it go with the P R? Does it work with your administrative assistant that we have? You know, like, is that a better combination versus, you know, obviously this model works, all the general evolving door. If you knew that, you know, going into this, this is a stepping stone for administrators to start their career in administration. But the question would be is, does that, you know, does that community ed slash P R slash administrative position, does that make a full-time position for somebody where that's a little bit more appealing to someone to have, you know, a full-time job doing all of those things versus, you know, just a part-time or stipend or a, you know, an overall tech situation? I guess that would be a question I would have is, we've had this conversation just about every time we hired this position. Um, what does this look like? And so far it's just stayed where it's been, but, um, it seems like every, every time this comes up, we, we talk about, should we change this? And so, you know, so far we haven't. So I, it would be interesting to see if that's a better option overall.
So let me make sure in fairness, if you hire, if you post that has to be special ed license, then we could get reimbursed for about forty percent.
Right, yeah, I think.
They would be doing, because of the.
Evaluations and maybe support.
So they would be doing some of that as well.
Yes, yep, yep.
Okay.
It helps offload some of that paperwork and things like that, yep.
Well, I'm comfortable with that. I was a little edgy about just a dean, you know, when you look at the number of students. And it's the challenge because of two buildings and those things. So that to me is kind of a creative solution, I kinda like that. And the stuff that they're out community ed, which is kind of a burden to accommodate, right?
Right.
My, my only thing with community ed is we've made, I feel like, and this is just personal opinion. I feel like we've made a lot of strides in community ed. You know, I think we, we went in a good direction over the last couple of people we've had in there.
Yep.
And two or three people, I mean, and I wanna make sure it stays on that trajectory. I don't want it to just be, okay, it goes here and it's just my hour a day. And so now all of a sudden it doesn't receive the attention that it deserves.
Right.
That's a big, that's a big part of why we, you know, do really good things, so.
Well, it's a part of community engagement, right, that we find is pretty valuable and important. So we'll make sure we have strong community support as we see our summer programs get a tremendous amount of funding. We don't want to lose any of those pieces that takes time because that organized. So maybe it's a, a stipend to have somebody administer that. And then maybe the secretary takes care of all the marketing, we can have the right person there. You know, the district office admin secretary, cause I think there's some other transitional moves that can be made as well, which is even amongst secretary of staff potentially to, to support that as well. My biggest thing to be quite honest is we can't add more dollars as we look to cost containment. We really have to see where we can have any of those savings. And that was kind of my initial thought with the lead teachers, I thought maybe this is an opportunity, um, to, to save some significant dollars. But it did come back with concern of how can we do that when we've got pieces changing in our elementary.
Do we go into that position with the, um, instructional coach and that, those things, is there any time after the community ed position?
Well, there'll be instructional coaches at point eight, I guess we could look at that, uh, add that to the position, you know.
I'm just, I'm only here to talk to you.
Right, yep.
You guys don't want to hide, but where are the, my idea is.
I mean, we had that.
Water too.
We've had that conversation, I, again, I know that that's been, obviously we haven't filled that position. There's obviously some benefits to having somebody in that position. As we move forward, whatever decision we make building wise, we're gonna need somebody to be able to manage, you know, some sort of a public engagement portion of that, or I shouldn't say many, but at least help, you know, produce things there. Conversation before and now we're, we're at a crossroads again, or we're gonna need some pieces and.
Where do we, you know, we're in this discussion, so where do we make the decision? Are we making the decision or are you gonna come to us at some time with a recommendation? What's, where's the end game there? I think we've gotten an end game with the dean, or I think people have had an agreement from where we're at that in the daycare piece, hopefully is.
Right.
Keep an eye on that, cause I wanna make sure that it's not, you know, stays out of that position.
Right.
Some way, meet this way back in.
And the preschool piece seems to make sense to people as well, just spelling that internally and looking at that summer stipend, if there's any summer work. I think, kinda hearing the conversation, my recommendation would be, but I just wanna run it by Megan one more time. I know she's concerned that she's gonna be transitioning, right? So we have summer programs that are gonna be up and running. But I think maybe there's a stipend paid to somebody to administer, to have that skill set, it's a stipend. But then a lot of that goes to the district office administrative assistant that can help with, uh, the district office pieces there, clerical duties, but also then the marketing and then that community ed clerical piece there to take care of that. I think that would be, to me, that would be a really good process.
So in the, you know, Megan said twenty hours high average a week or a month.
Yep.
Um, and she was doing everything. So maybe it wouldn't be twenty hours a month if you had that support. So maybe we could say stipend in the beginning, cause let's have the juxtaposition and that, you know, the challenge is some other that they go, uh, increase stipend already allotment until that position is hired and they're gonna have to do all those pieces that she's getting. And then they.
Good point. Cause we have some directors right now, and maybe one of those directors would say, if I'm willing to manage, if I get a stipend, let's get us through this summer.
Right.
Reevaluate, um.
Maybe one time, cause it, it wouldn't be fair to reduce it and then they have to do everything and then they just.
Right.
And I wonder if they, you know, like, is that something we need to put some feelers out to see if there is a, you know, interest in that? You know, I guess we can, we can say all we want, but we wanna put somebody on stipend, but we don't, we don't have anybody that is interested. But I think with that, something we have to start with, uh, you know, put some feelers out to those, obviously those that are already involved. And then we have some teachers that are already involved with our summer program. Are they interested in that? Is there somebody else in your staff that would be interested in that additional role at this point? And then, I mean, that's a, maybe we're looking to do this or, you know, we're looking to add some of these students here, but initially we'll be in charge.
Right. So I, I like that, let's have a transitional piece to find if somebody's willing to get us through the summertime. Gives us time to get that district office piece lined up for the, and say, okay, here's now what duty is like, here's how people align. Um, we have some people that are in the building, we can always reach out to Harold, I know that's one of the person in the room that's done community ed before. Way back when I was, um, a teacher here, so, um, so maybe we could just check on that to see how to get that to align. And what is that hourly requirement look like? Cause that stipend could be more flexible to say, hey, we know in the fall it's not quite as busy. However, we still have at least some opportunities to say, we still wanna see growth. So you don't wanna say, we're gonna cut it all the way back, we'd like you to grow the program. I'm gonna say one with one, cause I don't have any time to do that. So I do like that idea to see if there's somebody to help us transition, say, here's a stipend to manage those programs that are ready to go now. We just need somebody to manage them, make sure they're successful and then we can move forward, you know. And still this month, I think June, we did that plan, so, hey, if we're moving forward at all. But I think that stipend, long-term, I also think that piece two is putting more of that duty on that district office administrative, uh, administrative assistant position.
So then I guess the question would be is, are we comfortable with this dean of students position with the approach to that, correct? The dean of students portion tying that more to the special education side versus the community ed side? Is that, is that where we're, is everybody in, in agreeance there?
So are we paying not to get the special ed license first? I mean, that's, that's one of the things that I would love to remove that.
Right, yeah, or would we say preferred and then, but then that maybe changes our, if they don't have, and we say, guess what? Now community ed's gonna be part of that.
If they prefer, how long can they get that licensure? Somebody had that, somebody didn't have it, I don't know, I mean, it's a question, but. Let's say you have a really good candidate, if it doesn't have specialized key, how long would it take them to get that licensure certificate or whatever it is that you need to get?
Could take a year or two.
I mean, it's very rare, so that gets pretty clear with the need.
Right, we're not gonna ask you, other than that becomes a little more challenging. I think, I would like to say preferred, because who knows, maybe somebody applies and all of a sudden they're a rock star of the community ed piece. And we say, okay, guess what? Now we're gonna take dean of students, community ed, and then we have to flush out other.
So maybe the whole thing is, we could have various job, job responsibilities based on licensure.
Right, yep.
And that would be maybe most likely.
Right, yep, yep, to get us.
I think the other question would be is, do you have to, in, in order to tie those, I mean, if you're working, you know, in the special ed realm, whether it be the D S four, you should have those pieces, does that still tie those dollars or does the licensure tie those dollars?
I feel like that's your special ed. So, yeah, I think it just gives us a little bit of flexibility if somebody comes in to apply in, on their community ed, I think they want to market or I'll do this, I'll grow the program. So we'll see that. Go, if somebody wants to say, I've got the special ed piece, we can just let that however best meets the needs for our district. And the unfortunate part is, quite honestly, these positions here, dean of students are the long-term positions, so they claim, I mean, it's good management, right? I mean, it's like assistant principals, you don't always see assistant principals stay long either, cause that's not really always the things that people want to do. So I think we can get something for sure, taking out the daycare and taking the feedback and hopefully make some, some improvements to that.
We gotta make some big changes, we don't have a problem. Hey, the goal, so regardless of the long-term position or not, you gotta make adjustments, gotta get better.
Right, yep, that's what we're doing. So. Yeah, and I think that dean of students position's changed over the last probably five, eight years as well from what it was, there may have been more time in the past, but we almost definitely.
All right, and then we look for a motion to approve the job description as we stated for the dean of students position? A second? Can you hear that discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, consider the sharing agreement for the music teacher with Herman North Cross.
Yep. And so that should be, should have been attached there as well. Um, I did make one last, you know, change, um, last evening, and that was the fact that, that, cause I know that Herman is looking to have that be a K twelve band choir. So if there's any additional activities outside of the day that they're responsible, so if there's a concert or something like that and there is a stipend paid for that, maybe they can take care of their own stipends that way, so it wasn't the only other addition, uh, to that piece. And then the one thing that I did change is now it's forty-one percent, instead of forty-three, it's forty-one percent W C A, fifty-nine percent Herman. We will assume our portion of the mileage as well. I don't think that's, we're not gonna be overly pushy on some of those things, so it still keeps your cost to what I initially said, it's forty-three and fifty-seven. Just that we'll cover our portion of the mileage there. And then Caitlin's already aware of the hours and stuff, so they'll start over there and then finish their day over at, um, South Elementary, South Elementary. So hopefully we get candidates, it's a big position, so it doesn't necessarily, I mean, it's at least a full-time position, but it doesn't necessarily die between two buildings and ones like K twelve. So hopefully we get some, some interest in there and we have to give it to that position to apply licensed teacher as well.
All right, any other questions on that one? So the motion to approve the shared agreement for a music teacher with Herman North Cross schools. So, second?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. And that brings us to, um, a closed session to discuss the negotiation strategies. Um, we go. So for a motion to approve, going to closed meeting, um, there's N S S statute four seven one point seven zero five, subsection fifteen D point zero three two. Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Should be very fairly short.
Are you leaving or are you staying in here?